...everybody make sure your cellphones are off and stand for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, before we start, I'd like to thank you Mike for keeping in touch with me at the last meeting.
Oh, you're welcome.
Um, let's go through, motion to adopt the agenda.
Uh, are there any additions or?
The only thing that we may want to add is I put some pictures out on your desk of LS Network's proposed location and we just want to just leave you those, um, that's all.
I move we adopt the agenda with one addition.
A second? Motion made and seconded.
You want to vote on that?
You have to call.
Oh, those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm.
You're looking at your.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out, we're putting the LS in, under old business?
Yeah.
Okay, um, consent agenda, that's all, now one, is that a separate?
It's a separate.
Alright, so, can I, well, you've got a.
Well, on the, on the town council works that shows for November fourteenth, it says the meeting adjourned, started at three and adjourned at four fifty-five, I'm wondering if that's every good effect.
Yeah, I'll fix that.
A correction, really correction.
Then I move we approve the consent agenda with one fraction.
A second.
Motion made and seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll move on down to the speakers, new laws for even driving with that two thousand eighteen, it's just informational item. Anybody?
No comment. It's just informational anyway, just giving you guys a heads up what's coming down.
Yeah, there.
I'll make sure we oblige the rules, huh?
That's right, but I'm trying to keep you guys out of trouble.
Next on the agenda is a letter from Reverend Gary McCree, Eagles Rest, Mr. McCree?
Yes.
Well, it's not under public comments.
Okay.
Should, it's under guest speakers and communications, so are you putting, should he be under public comment or?
Right, I didn't know he was coming until we just received that yesterday, so, yeah, so I put the letter in first under informational and then we need to move it down to public comment for, yeah, commentary, how about that?
We'll bring you up in a minute, um. Do you have the Lake County Board of Commissioners' agenda in there? I guess we'll find out who the new board commissioners administrative assistant is tomorrow.
Old man's hired, finally?
Yeah. Okay, Lake, uh, what school district, another informational item, I'm going over that. And I don't know how that's coming out, I don't know, you been investigating that one Travis?
What's that?
On the.
The Instagram account.
Yeah, that was a case that I've been working, um, we've found the kid responsible who is currently an Indian, so does not pose any threats to the school this time, uh, he won't be back, um, in the United States probably until March, he'll be back in Mexico in February, um, his justification for doing it was trying to make friends, we're not exactly sure why he did what he did, um, but a report will be submitted to the district attorney for review, so, but there's no active threats with him being out of the country this time or something.
Just another, another popper, full social media campaign?
Yep.
Okay, now we'll go on to public comment, alright?
I'm Gary McCree, um, I know some of you, um, I'm the founding pastor of Lakeview Ministries, a church that currently owns the gathering place on the corner of Center and F, um, moved here in nineteen seventy-seven with my family and from April of nineteen seventy-seven to the end of nineteen eighty-four, I was the senior pastor of First Baptist Church. At the beginning of nineteen eighty-five, a group of us started a new church that we called Lakeview Ministries and I was the senior pastor of Lakeview Ministries from beginning of nineteen eighty-five until the summer of two thousand, I was absent for a couple of years because of health issues related to post polio syndrome, um, in two thousand, I handed over the leadership of the church to Donna and Mike Dukem, Donna became the senior pastor, Mike Dukem is the outreach pastor, uh, we continue to attend the church and I act in an advisory capacity to the leadership team at Lakeview Ministries. Two thousand, my wife and I formed our own ministry called Eagles Rest Ministry and we've been primarily for the last seventeen years traveling in ministry, we have churches in Northern California, Washington, Oregon, uh, we've gone to a number of different nations, we are focused primarily now on Mexico and India, or Mexico and Kenya, and so being on the road so much, I've tried to stay up on current events that are happening in Lakeview, but sometimes that's a challenge. At the beginning of October, I was reading in the paper that there was a proposed cannabis dispensary that was going to be located at the former cable company office, a few steps away from the church, my assumption at the time was that there were restrictions as far as citing a cannabis dispensary next to schools and churches, so I went on the town's website and clicked on the ordinance tab and there were several different little icons that looked like documents which were links to various town ordinances and I found the link to ordinance number eight fifty-two, opened it up and read it and in ordinance eight fifty-two, it did state that cannabis dispensaries were not to be located within two hundred and fifty feet of the church, so I alerted our leadership team at, uh, Lakeview Ministries and Pastor Donna, uh, called the town to inquire about this and her call was never returned, my wife suggested, well, you should go back on the site and print out that ordinance in case somebody tries to erase it, and I said, well, nobody would do that, and so October eleventh was when I first looked at work, looked at the town site and so the following Monday on the sixteenth, I went back to the town website, opened the ordinance tab and all the little icons with links to town ordinances had been erased and in its place was this statement, which is still there today when I checked, an ordinance allowing the location of marijuana facilities within the town of Lakeview, establishing time, place, and manner regulations on such facilities, providing penalties for violation hereof and replacing ordinance number eight fifty-two in its entirety and declaring an emergency. At the time, it didn't make sense to me and I noted that marijuana was spelled wrong, and so, uh, who did that? Who, who edited the webs, webpage?
Who edited?
Yeah, who took out all the links to the town ordinances and put the statement on?
Well, that's, I don't know who deleted it because they were never.
There actually was an ordinance, as you stated, the number, uh, that was in effect until a certain point and then the other ordinance that replaced it took place, so the removal of that from the website makes no difference because at the time that you're giving us, those ordinances had already changed.
My, my question was, who edited the website?
Uh, it's not me, I don't know how.
So we've had somebody outside this town who's hacking into the town website?
No, I've edited the website, but I've never deleted or added anything.
But we don't have a complete ordinance rundown on our website either, that one was placed there probably back when we enacted that ordinance, eight fifty-two, and it shouldn't have remained there, I don't know why.
Well, there were other ordinances there, there were linked to other ordinances there too, somebody wrote this statement and put it on the website, who wrote this statement?
I don't know what it even said.
I just read it to you.
So, so again, the statement is correct, what needed to be followed up with the statement, and maybe there is, I haven't checked the website, it's just a link to what we adopted, the new ordinance.
The new ordinance, yeah, the new ordinance.
The removal of eight fifty-two is absolutely a hundred percent appropriate, we, that ordinance does not take effect in the town any longer.
Well, within five days, somebody edited the website, who, who on, in the town?
Appropriately, so I don't, it doesn't matter who.
It's good that they did it.
It matters to me because it looks like somebody's trying to be crooked.
How are they trying to be crooked?
Because they changed it.
They had already pushed that one and replaced that one.
Pastor Donna, Pastor Donna called his town and wanted to talk to somebody about a dispensary being located within two hundred and fifty feet of the church.
Which is no longer part of our.
Okay, let's move on.
Question for you, when did she call here?
It was after the eleventh, between the eleventh and the weekend.
Of what?
October.
October of this year?
Yes.
Okay, because I never got the message if she did call here.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, I don't know who she talked to, but I, I make it a point to return phone calls.
Well, anyway, I was able to find this, ordinance eight fifty-two on another website and I printed it out and it looked like it was about the same as I had read on the other.
Yeah, there should only be one eight fifty-two ordinance, I mean, it just isn't entered into our, our regulation books with the state code and the codification will show you exactly what eight fifty-two was, but it's no longer in force, the ordinance that replaced it is the one that's in.
Okay, that's eight fifty-eight, so I was then informed that ordinance eight fifty-eight had replaced eight fifty-two and copies were available at the town's office and my wife graciously came down and picked up a copy for me and I noticed in the new ordinance that there's no restrictions with regard to churches as far as citing cannabis dispensaries, so is that correct, the new ordinance is not?
Does not include any, any of those restrictions, we lifted quite a few restrictions that were imposed in the first order.
Okay.
The first ordinance was for medical home, it, it wasn't for recreational.
So we had to look at a new ordinance because there were requests for dispensaries in our locale and so therefore we were looking at the ordinance to bring it in line with state laws and regulations, we didn't, we didn't make those laws that the state has enacted by OLCC and so in order for the town to stay up to date, we had to come in line our marijuana ordinances.
Okay.
Which we did.
According to OLC, local zoning ordinances prevail with location issues not addressed by OLCC, so this body is permitted to put in whatever restrictions, okay, on the last page, it says this ordinance was read by title, no, only and no council member requested that the ordinance be read in full and thereafter was adopted by the following vote, five in favor adopted the twenty-fifth day of July two thousand seventeen, signed by Raymond Turner, the mayor, and Roberta Vanderwall, the town manager, so I went on the YouTube because these proceedings are recorded on YouTube and I asked one of my leadership colleagues in the church to go on YouTube and we, independent of each other, watched the full meeting of the twenty-fifth.
I, I did re, let me, let me, before we get going on this, I did review your letter that, that you had given us a rundown on what you're speaking of and I will tell you that the town does not record the meetings, that is not our recording on YouTube, that is done by another entity and I will tell you that the time that this board voted, there was no other entity here recording, so you did not see anything as far as YouTube in regards to our approval of that.
Unless it was on yours.
Uh, he was not here that day.
Oh, he wasn't, okay, okay, I didn't, I just wanted to make sure.
I just didn't know, you know, but.
So on July?
I believe that you're missing a YouTube because there was nothing there, no one recorded it.
Okay, so on July twenty-fifth, you had another meeting besides the meeting that was recorded on YouTube?
Yes, that was only a work session that you saw on YouTube, I, I, I believe that's all that was, a work session, there were a lot of people here who commented, am I right?
I remember there were some gals from the head start.
Yes, that was a work session, we held a work session, we reviewed, as you said, the ordinances and we, we, when we voted on it, we didn't need to go over and hear the mayor recite the ordinance to us because we had had a work session to go over and overview that ordinance that we enacted, so all of our counselors had an opportunity to review in our packets prior to our regular meeting in which we enacted that ordinance to replace ordinance eight fifty-two, we did it in, in a fashion that there were people here on that day, but there was no recording of the program, not, we don't do that, so.
And that was your regular publicized town meeting?
Yes, sir, it was a regular session, we was on our agenda, everything, and we can give you all that documentation showing.
And that wasn't recorded?
Not by the media.
Not by the media.
We always audio record meetings.
We have our recordings.
And we have minutes, but.
And minutes of our meeting, you can review the minutes and it will tell you a pretty good rundown.
So was the public informed that you were going to change the ordinance?
Certainly was, there were public comments in regards to.
There was at multiple meetings.
Multiple meetings, we, we didn't just move on it overnight, it was something that we had to look at because as we said, state transition of laws went from medicinal to recreational medicinal.
I know.
And so therefore we were forced to come up with a new ordinance, ours only dealt with, with the medicinal usage and so with the state laws enacted, we had to come up with our ordinance which fell in line with OLCC guidelines.
Did you contact any leaders in the faith community informing them that you were going to change the ordinance?
By public notice, everyone gets that same note.
Where?
In the public newspaper.
I didn't read it in the newspaper.
Well, there is a public notice of every one of our meetings in.
And the paper was responding to this, there was multiple articles where they were saying we were meeting, discussing this prior to a separate voting as well, I mean, the, the community, you unfortunately didn't know, but there was definitely, you know, it, it discussed.
Quite a bit, but we heard, we heard quite a bit put in, as you said, there were, there were members from the, the public health, they, they voiced their opinions in the work session and we had other members that were here the day that we voted on the ordinance.
Well, I spent forty years speaking and writing and I am having difficulty to find the words to describe the depth of my anger and my disappointment in this governing body. We had an election in this county in which seventy-four percent of the voters of this county said, we do not want the marijuana industry in this county.
And that was for the county outside of the jurisdiction of Lakeview proper, Lakeview proper had already had an ordinance approving it for the growth of medicinal marijuana as well as dispensaries to open and production facilities, that was done two years ago or something, or longer, and that was in effect for a long time, there have been people that have spent, I don't know, upwards to a million dollars on facilities that are going to open up here in our community, so, you know, it's, it's nothing, the Lake County Economic Development Advisory Committee recommended to the county commissioners that they not turn it over to a vote for the public, that they should follow the advisory committee's recommendation to open it up like Lakeview did and not try to curtail a new industry in our state and that's what we're forced with, it is a new industry, none of us have ever been in the pot growing industry or dispensaries, but yet do we single out bars and say you can't come to our town, no we don't, so why should we single out another new industry in our state that's approved by the state, and I probably shouldn't get off on myself, I'm sorry. And I, I do, I, I feel that, maybe you feel that way about.
In a democratic society, voters have power through their vote, seventy-four percent of the voters of Lake County said, no, we do not want the marijuana industry in Lake County, last I checked, Lakeview is in Lake County and is the county seat, so you have seventy-four percent of your fellow citizens that say, we do not want the marijuana industry here, yet you usurp their authority and go ahead and open up the doors to this industry, now we as churches, the same as schools, who minister to a vulnerable population, our church personally is faced with two cannabis dispensaries on our block and so children and families and young people, people who have come off of drugs, keep people who are trying to come off of drugs, people who are trying to stay off of drugs, have to pass by two cannabis dispensaries to come to our church, to me, that's abhorrent.
You're right next door to a liquor establishment, is that the same?
It's different.
It is?
It is.
That's all I need here from you, thank you, sir, you can keep talking, I'm not going to listen much more, we feel that that's different.
Marijuana is different than alcohol, I've been counseling people for forty years who have been trapped in the drug culture.
So, mayors should take control of the meeting, but I, I do want to say, everything by law has been covered in this whole law and the minutes and the record will show that and we can discuss this more offline, but the, the law's been followed, the state wording allowed the town to do what it did regardless of what the voters had voted and, and, you know, everything by law has been done according to a democratic process which was voted upon not just by this community, but by the state, which was trickled down to us, which we, allowed us the opportunity as a, as a council to vote the way we did and to change ordinance as it had previously read only for specifically the medical side, but we can talk more offline and, and I'm sure Roberta can get you some of the minutes and, and other staff can get you some of the, the documentation that followed the correct process that we handled, now the, the whole, you know, discussion and personal beliefs that you have and as a minister, we respect that, there was many people from you who said in congregations and other congregations that came in here in support of the decision we made and, and they're users and they, you know, they have great needs for at least the medical side of it, now recreationally, that's a whole other ballgame, but by law and from our legal counsel's advice, we took the steps we took and, and I stand by them as I, I know the rest of the council does, it doesn't change the fact that I personally am against recreational use of marijuana or alcohol or any other substance that will be mind altering and do change a person's behavior for a negative which obviously results in, in great societal loss, so, but people have the freedom of choice, you, I, we appreciate your, you know, discussion and I hope you can get rid of some of the anger that you're feeling because we are all volunteers up here, we're elected, yes, but we can be removed at any point if, if there's someone who willing to step up and make the hard decisions we're trying to make, it comes down to personal choice and people need to be responsible and a law enforcement will take care of those who are not being.
Can I ask, no, I just want to just say something, if you want to receive the ministerial association or, or yourself personally copies of our agendas to make sure something of interest, you're welcome to add your website or your email to, to Don, we'll get it and we will make sure that you are added and get our agenda every time, I mean, that hadn't happened, so.
Thank you for your time, that's everything I came to say.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir, for coming in. Okay, let's move on to department reports, Scott's not here, Dennis not here, Travis stepped out, so I guess that goes right to you Jeff.
Well, I don't really have anything to add other than, uh, I have a, uh, I mentioned in there that we're addressing the, the issues that people have been having over the last couple of months on water quality and, and we're, uh, in the process of, of getting some advice from some, some other government entities and, uh, uh, we also have another small issue with snow removal contractors, we've, we've put out for bid again, a couple of people that worked for us last year are not interested in doing it this year, so we're going to be pretty short-handed and, you know, we'll naturally pick up the slack ourselves and tell some other people, but hopefully, uh, the stuff that's coming out in the paper will get some, some different contractors interested in, in doing it, uh, so for right now, we only have one contractor that's expressed interest in clearing driveways, so it's just such a hit and miss project, you know, you almost have to have people that are, you know, just on standby waiting to, to work and, and there's no way to decide, you know, how much, we may have to restructure that contract where people get a little bit of a stipend for being on call.
I'll do it.
Or we may have to open it up to different types of equipment, you know, maybe a, a heavy duty four wheeler or something, maybe able to clear driveways, but for right now, we have an issue arising.
That means that contract?
We have enough contracts, right, but we'll, we'll get by with it.
How is our financial situation on that with the, what we've been?
The money's there.
We're, we're getting out of here first.
So they, so the previous contracts, did they give you a reason why they didn't want to, are they just basic level projects?
Yeah, one of them that's taken all their equipment out of town on a project, it's going to last most of the winter and, and then one just has a small crew and, uh, starting a major house build right now out on the west side, he thought he would need his piece of equipment out there to clear snow from his project and to do the foundation and, so, we, we reached out to a couple of other local contractors that are obviously already qualified and they don't have exactly the piece of equipment we need, they're, they have a two wheel drive backhoe, they're willing to put it out there, but it's, you know, on solid ice, some of these roads with a, with a grade, it's asking for trouble to have a fender bender with no, no iron on the tires, so, but, uh, like I said, it's going to be advertised tomorrow's paper and the following week and, and hopefully somebody we don't know about will, will be interested and, and also, uh, the contractor that is still interested in doing it said he may actually pick up a second piece of equipment because it does work well with their situation, so. Other than that, unless someone has a question on the report I put in there.
In, in reviewing that with, and I'm sure this is not the place for that, but in reviewing the, the requirements for the contractors, should we look at perhaps letting a contractor handle the whole community versus where we allow a number of contractors because if, if there's more to do, then one person might feel like it's worth moving forward.
Yeah, we could look at other options for certain, uh, but, but then, you know, you're looking at giving somebody, in that situation, someone's going to want a certain amount of money to be prepared to do it, and then where does that fall, you know, they may not have to plow at all and then they may also have to plow five days a week for two months straight, so it's a pretty.
Pretty iffy thing.
Pretty iffy thing, yeah.
Cut the, put the pencil in there, run the business that way.
Right, so, anyway, we're, we're dealing with that.
Thanks Jeff, well, I want to, I talked to a guy this morning, I wanted to share with the councilman with you, Michigan, where he was from, where he moved from, said that to have your water turned on would be a hundred and fifty dollars, non-refundable, non-transferable, so if you move, you gotta pay another hundred and fifty dollars, their average water bill, just, just water alone was a hundred dollars, that's what they pay for water, they're in Michigan, he said, well, here water's cheap, well, tell some of the other people that, yeah, so I thought that was quite interesting, Travis, we can go back to you now, you're back.
Sorry about that, uh, I don't have anything really to add unless there's any questions, I am working on the grant through ODOT, they've been a little resistive to us just getting equipment and I explained to them, well, how do we do? well, how do we do speed enforcement without equipment? We have to start somewhere. Their concern is with each piece of equipment, it requires twenty hours of traffic enforcement a month per piece of equipment. So each one of our officers will require, be required to work twenty hours of traffic enforcement a month. I don't see that as unrealistic. That's less than two hours per shift, and I think it's manageable with our call volume. So that's what I explained to them, so we're still working on that. They said that they would talk to me as things get a little closer and see where we can go. We may not end up with all four units this year, maybe we only end up with a couple, but I'm definitely working on that. I've also got Officer Loff working on trying to look into COPS grants, maybe for another school resource officer again, see what it would take so we can start that process. You know, maybe we can find another officer that way, fund it federally, we'll see what we can figure out. But we're working on some grants there as well.
Have you heard anything on our building on HQ?
I got the paperwork to Roberta, and we're, that's where we're at with that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now one to old business. Ordinance eight sixty-three, no smoking in the park. Tabled that and brought it up to this one.
I remember we asked you to read it.
I have read it. I have read it. I have a question for Jeff, just on some verbiage that he used. He said it would be a Class A civil infraction, I think is the verbiage he used. That's not something I'm familiar with, but I'm sure it's something that's more his realm of legal terms than mine. So I was just curious to what that entailed, too. It's not a term I'm used to seeing. Usually it's a violation or the one he added, civil. I also talked to the judge today about that, and I asked him what his thoughts were, if he had any guidance or anything that he would like to see. His suggestion is maybe a progressive fine system, you know, fifty dollars for the first violation, a hundred dollars the second, something along those lines is what he said he would like to see.
That's kind of what, you know, we did. We did the C, B, and A.
Okay.
Did you read that?
I haven't seen a new one. I just got the one I got last time, and it just said A.
We have the C, B, and A. You should have got a pie in there with you, so.
And that with the packet? I didn't see it in there.
The first violation is a Class C civil infraction, the second a Class B, and the third, and each subsequent, a Class A civil infraction.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that better than the last wording, which was explained to me as being legally correct, but hard to understand by people just like us.
Yeah, I saw you typing some of the wording that we had.
Here you go.
Yeah, I got the agenda. I got the agenda, but I didn't see this.
Oh, oh.
There's two, there's two packets.
Okay.
Sorry, I tried.
I'm going, I'm today. So again, I'd be, with him using the word civil infraction, I'll just have to see if there's some statutory requirement for what the fine means. It's just not a term that I'm used to. So, but I'll talk to Jeff on that. But, yeah, I think it looks good.
There are no objections other than what we've discussed?
This is the second time this has been on our agenda. We tabled it from last time, the legal counsel to change a few things, which appear to be changed, especially that one word.
Yeah.
It's, are that uncured?
Uncured is still in there?
Yes.
It's not still in there, right?
Yes. It is.
It's following the section three penalty at the very bottom.
And he wanted that to remain in there, so it is not taken care of. You know, if you go back the next time, yes, and it's another one.
Not a problem.
Yeah.
It's okay. I didn't unplug it. I'm going to get it, but didn't unplug it. So do we want to make a motion and then vote on this to pass this, or do we want to wait in the head of James?
No, I think, well, I think.
I think it's all been corrected.
I think we all agree on the wording in this is more.
So, man, I'd like to make a motion to read this ordinance, eight fifty-three by title only.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I will move that we approve ordinance number eight sixty-three and ordinance prohibiting smoking within town parks, refilling ordinance number five five three, providing penalties for violation hereof and declaring an emergency. I'll second that.
Motion made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And as soon as humanly possible, should we take down the old one if it's still up?
Put this nice one on. We'll get on that tomorrow. We're going to spend some time, but I, it's kind of weird.
Yeah, those were on there last week.
I'm just.
He is correct, because I looked at that this afternoon, and that, and I could not get a total on that town thing, a copy or total, three or four pages or whatever that is, to print. All it said on there was the top that he read.
So you look over takes, don't worry.
Absolutely. No problem. Much more than.
Yeah, I need another, this is better.
Okay, next on that is the LS networks. You guys got your picture there. My thought is kind of funny is they wanted to put the ten-by-ten building in, and now it's four foot by six foot.
Sixty-two inches.
So we got public works, so we're pleased. You guys see where this location's at? You have any problems with that?
I don't.
I don't.
I like it better than where it was before. It is, give the utility right away where it belongs.
I think it's more visible. I mean, the park's a nice public place, but it's kind of out of sight, out of mind from the main part of town, and I think that's a little way of location. I don't like seeing them anyways, but I think it's still a way better location.
It's a lot different.
No, this is fine. No one's going to touch it.
There's a storm drain in that same utility right away, but it's both, there's room for both.
You need a motion to approve the area, or?
Actually, if it's okay. I had brought a lease agreement forward a few months back, and then we decided we didn't want that location, and so now they've come up with this location. So at our next meeting, I will bring that lease agreement forward, yeah, with this location. Just want to make sure that was agreed.
Did we, is it germane to check with anyone who owns that property in that area?
It's our right, right?
Yeah, it's our right, okay.
They've got access to your.
Well, and it's, you know, it's located far enough away from the businesses that are there, you know, there. I mean, it's not even interfering with the taco truck, which would undermine me.
Many people share your concern.
Yeah. You're going to block off my taco truck, you're in trouble. Looks good there.
And I had both Darryl and Jeff look at it yesterday, so.
And they're not asking that we put like, no parking in front of everything? They can get to it. That's good, we'll bring it to a session.
Your new business, emergency preparedness, new agenda that'll be over at tomorrow. Butter hole on you?
Yeah.
I will be in attendance as planner for the county.
I'll be there.
Your name is on there. Please do community partnership from the Algea Theater. Next one is from DEQ, air quality request.
Don, I read through this, and I think, I think what they're wanting us to do isn't it to write a letter or?
Yes, they want us to write a letter stating this is why we should be able to have exemptions on a red day, is how I kind of feel about it. Maybe I'm wrong, so.
Well, my thought was that they want, Congress wants to delay the increase.
Well, yeah.
And the standard, which we won't be able to meet.
For three years.
More exposure placed.
Right.
So I understand where Rachel's coming from, from DEQ, and I understand we're on the committee, and I'm not speaking for the committee, but I'm all in favor of delaying a higher standard, which we can't meet, which is only a person and non-attainment. We don't know how many red days we had in a row this last two weeks, but.
Okay, we've had probably eleven red days, at least, but only one of them was a true calculated red day. The number that we don't want to go over, the attainment number, was over eighty.
It only exceeded it one day.
Yeah, only one day. But I still.
Large number of days.
So we were fortunate there, but all the other days, we were able to keep our number of the attainment at a lower level that we didn't reach those numbers. There was a few days it was close, but we never reached them.
Well, with our present ordinance as it is now, it's my understanding that right now there is no exemption whatsoever for red day. I don't feel there should be. I think that's why we only had one day out of the eleven that were declared red days, that we had to worry about smoke inhalation in our lungs. So that forewarns people, don't burn today, because you're liable to force it up above that eighty percentile or whatever you're speaking of.
And I think people, after several years of trying to get this.
Are finally catching on.
And I think people are finally adhering to it and calling in or checking before they burn, so I agree with that, that we don't want to make exceptions on the red.
No, you don't, but in some of those people that were burning on the.
No, this is just for the new compliance that's on the national.
This is really just to.
Letter support on the national.
Letter support on the national thing, so I guess concerns us maybe that we don't want to write a letter.
Well, I talked to.
Three years delay is unfortunately an offset. Because if we look back at the past history of this whole thing with DEQ, this is a standard. Okay, fine, we met it. Oh, no, we really didn't, because now we have another standard, and they kept doing that. So, you know, at what point do we just regulate ourselves out of existence?
Right.
So if we can delay it for three years.
Yeah.
I could write a letter non-supporting. Bertha?
Well, I just found it interesting that the email we got from Rachel, which I like Rachel a lot, just was kind of pushing us in that direction when I found it a little odd that she didn't kind of think of where we might stand on this issue, because the whole EPA and, I mean, I'm not going to give myself books on that, but, you know.
Well, I think that.
A delay to get better.
There are dangers in wood smoke and things, that's what EPA is all about, but we have a right court.
Can't even reach the standard, so it's unfunded mandates, essentially. They wanted to start kicking us more money to try to get people into compliance and us to be able to bring down the numbers appropriately, then.
Well, I think part of the problem, too, is even when we're having red days, the forest services doing controlled burns in our area that are affecting our quality.
Part of the.
But I thought I.
Agreement was that they weren't going to do that, so I.
I also thought that EPA was not going to comp those days when there was forest fires or controlled burns.
Well, that's what Peter's trying to get that one that we got hammered for. He's trying to get that one wiped off and reversed.
Smoke travels a long ways.
Well, they were burning in South Warren, I mean, that's.
And they were told no. They did ask, and they were told no.
And yet, they've still got to burn on certain days, or they can't burn at all, and then it just continues to decay, and we still got to, you know, seal whatever, you know.
But I do have to say, in a lot of defense, to some of our community members, some of them, I have gone to their houses, knocked on the door, and they, you know, a lot of them were new people, so they didn't know the rules, so I gave them a copy of the stuff, a copy of the ordinance, explained, and they were very thankful and very grateful. And so I didn't have any, I haven't had any problems with anybody being, you know, it's been a good year so far, even though we've had a ton of red days, but people have been a lot nicer this year.
So can I just make one suggestion? So there, I've been checking Facebook and liking every time you post, and you're tagging me now, and we've said in our committee that we do that to help out in this, and who knows how many people are looking at that. I wish there were, I wish there was more likes on that, so anyone who's watching this can start liking it more. Just acknowledging the fact that we're trying to do our part, and that's part of our plan with, that we're sending with DEQ to, you know, EPA and all this. But one of the things that you maybe already, and we could have talked offline about this, but when there was not red days, it was still over the weekend getting shown, how about the reader board?
Yes.
So, I'll get it out, you'll get that figured out.
Yes, it's just, if I call.
The weekend's hard, no one's.
Well, and not only that, because I do, I do call over there, but if they're busy, they do forget. So it's going to be where I have to call them a couple times to make sure that they didn't change.
And that's the unfortunate thing about not having control on somebody who's trying to help us.
Right.
Because ultimately, it hurts our citizens when they can't, they're thinking that they can't burn when they could be burning, and we want them to burn because it is cheaper.
I did get some calls on Monday regarding, you know, hey, they still had it this color over the weekend. I apologize, they are number one dispatchers, they do get sidetracked and busy very easily and very quickly, so I have to take that into consideration. So maybe what I could do is go over and ask them, because it's a whole separate computer, if I could just go in and learn how to.
Yeah, it'd be nice to ask them for access or something. So you're looking into.
Take the pressure off of them.
I had a question from a friend of mine about the pellet stoves. And I said I would check, but I didn't think there were any regulations preventing the pellet stoves.
Not right now.
Am I still on that? And if we delay this for three years, we're okay with him anyway?
Well, and I talked to Peter, we did talk to Peter during our meeting regarding the pellet stove. You, there's no smoke coming out, it's heat wave. It does not affect the air, in all honesty.
It's not a BM 2.5 problem.
Yeah, I didn't think so, but I thought, I will ask and make sure.
You're good.
Good. Well, I'm not, but somebody is.
Dave will be good.
All right, next question.
Before we move on, the one thing I think that we've all agreed on is through the years, education has been up considerably, because I know when we had red days before, you could count on it being socked in, smoky down to everyone's front door and in their house if they opened the door. But if we do have people that are burning on those red days, we need to issue fines. And I just think that, you know, once a few of them start getting them, I mean, if they're being disrespectful to their neighbors and to the town as far as ordinance, we need to do so.
So that's something we're looking at, the committee kind of talked about that last time.
Yes. I looked in ordinance and maybe I overlooked it, but I didn't, I see where a fine could be placed by the police.
It's not very clear.
But it's not clear what the fine is and what it should be and how they are fined. It just says they are fined, there's no other.
So should we have some.
No reference to Class C violations.
Right, but I say.
So we just need to look at it, and that's why this is a progressive living document we're working on, and appropriate that we're working on.
The federal government wants to let this.
Because we will take more steps as needed if it's not working.
Well, I thought originally, the first step was a certified letter, warning them or, and explaining, you know, the procedure.
There is, people are getting mad about the letters, so I just go and talk to them.
Well, okay, I don't care, they're men, they.
I know. They just felt more offended by getting a letter. They said that they would rather talk to somebody, or even a phone call or something. We do have access to their.
Well, okay, if you talk to them, and I happen to.
Kind of a letter.
I still suggest a letter, a certified.
Then it's there.
And a certified letter. A certified letter, because then we have verification that went out, and then a fair repeat, then we take the next step. I mean, it has to be, you know.
Okay.
So, the procedures are still getting worked out, is what Dawn and the committee would tell you. We're still working out all the details, and as we do so.
When we first started this, we had a letter that went out.
But what approach Dawn's been taking, and as she's just said, was that it's working better for her to actually knock the door and talk to the people directly, which gets good compliance because they're willing to work.
As long as they.
Yeah, as long as they're willing to, but she's still going around and checking to see who's violating.
I'm not opposed to that.
And we might go back to the 2.5 plan, the PM 2.5, because the PM advanced plan that we're now on, it sounds like we left out the penalties. But I do believe that we had penalties in discussion pretty in depth in the PM 2.5, so we might look back and see if that needs to move forward.
Where do I look? Well, that's the.
It would be in ordinance, it would be in the ordinance.
We'll find it tomorrow.
I look at the one, and what a suggestion I might have, is to do similar to what we just did with the no smoking laws.
I love that.
That's very clear.
So, maybe we can look back.
Unfortunately, a lot of our older ordinances, they never put penalty phases in. They talked about it, I know in that ordinance, it talks that the police chief or his designated need to go in and remove the wood stove. By the way, that will never happen without a warrant from a judge and a lot of things, but.
Certain families that have already told us if you do.
Well, I argued that with the shotgun.
I did that, and I got overruled.
Yeah, I think that might be slightly unlawful, and there's so many civil liabilities that go with that, but.
Let's move on. We got a letter, a support letter from Friends of the Library, Dolly Parton Imagination Library Program. So, this is a letter we drafted that's going to them to support this program.
Right, when Shelley brought it.
Which is extra program.
Yes, but she needed a letter of support, so that's what this.
And that's an update, um, the, if I may, the Friends of the Library officially voted to become partners with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library at their December meeting. And in the first seventy-two hours, we already received twenty-seven hundred dollars of donations from friends, from the other, from people that had already said they were willing to support us if possible.
Are signups yet available?
Um, signups will be available officially January first.
Perfect.
And.
Keep pointing the paper, because this is an awesome program.
Right.
It is amazing.
And that was part of the decision from the Friends of the Library meeting in December, is that we are taking donations now, and that signature will happen January one.
No, it just needs a signature from the council commander.
It's awesome.
We definitely should support it, silent mail.
We have ODOT, City Department of Land Administration. Do we put in for this?
Yes, we did, and it was for fifty.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah, fifty thousand. Fifty thousand, it used to be twenty-five, and they bumped it to fifty. And now, according to this, it looks like we will get that fifty thousand dollars, but it's kind of delayed right now, so somebody's gonna get ahold of us and then we'll work through the process, but that kind of was encouraging, I thought you read it. Yeah, so.
So, what is it being used for?
J Street and that ugly intersection.
The one down there at the.
Missouri.
The one, we're still fighting to see who is really responsible for that intersection, so they should give us the money.
They should, and then ODOT hopefully will go in with us too, because it's ownership of several, or, you know, both the town and the state, so.
So, yeah, ODOT wanted to change that old system up there, and they were looking at it, the way they wanted to change it would be too hard for the truckers.
Didn't bother them when they put that stupid thing in the middle of the junction.
I think I do a U-turn right there today.
I've seen people go over that thing.
We had to take that one lamppost out, remember?
Anyway, the smart information will follow on that.
So, we got Business Organ, Red Rock Information and Update. So, Bertha and I was on a conference call with them this morning.
Business Organ?
No, I might let you film it.
There was a conference call this morning with the state that does the funding for this program. And there was two issues that they were discussing. One was affordable housing.
Yep.
And it's kind of interesting to note that there were forty-two condominium-type townhouses that will be being placed in Le Pine with some of the funding. It was, yeah, forty-two, and then there was forty-eight.
And Sisters.
No, forty-eight in Prado.
From Frandell?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of money going into housing, because, especially in rural areas, because we're so short on housing. So, that was a really good thing. They have already done Sisters, and there was quite a few at Sisters, about the same amount of money that was put into Sisters already. So, that was an informational piece. And then, Red Rock had put in for two-hundred-and-forty-five million. And through lots of discussions with all the people that were on the phone, they ended up allotting a hundred-and-ten. And then, that will be committed to them next week, and then, by the twenty-ninth of December. And then, there's two opportunities before April for Red Rock to come back and request additional funding. They just needed more information on, you know, whether it's tax or tax exempt. So, they wanted more information before committing the two-hundred-and-forty-five million, basically because for the prior two years, they have already funded or allocated the funding, and it was not ever used, and now they want a little more information before they release it. So, it was a very long two hours.
Yeah, well, I was here for an hour and a half, and she stayed and listened to them, jacked your jaw back and forth, basically.
Do you want that call?
I mean, I just.
I wasn't on that call.
That was this morning?
So, it's good, they're at least allocating that, but I don't know if that's gonna kill the project, because they have to get this funding all together by March. And they have a new funding bank of, it's golden, golden something, but it's, it does these type of bonding. And they have agreed to it, but they're now a little bit concerned because they didn't get all of that package.
I think federal government, a bond of seventy million.
Yeah. So, there was a lot of different funding, and if anyone wants to come and talk to me, I have my notes in the office, and I could go through them.
Glad to see they're still making progress.
Yeah, they might as well laugh a little bit.
They did mention breaking ground in the spring.
Well, I visited yesterday with Nathan Buehler, who is with the governor's office, and he is a public affairs person who was visiting with me at the radio station, and he just passed along to me that the meeting that they had on the fourteenth for the funding was approved, I guess. He didn't mention the amount, but he said that that meeting was, I guess it was approved in that meeting, and that there were two more, as you spoke of. I guess, with Bertha, that it's still piddling to more funding, so, like you said, it's still maybe in the pipeline.
I think it's still there, it's just a little bit disconcerting, or whatever, when, you know, the state kind of backs out of parks, you know, some of it. And I understand why they did, but, because last year, they committed a hundred-and-ninety million. So, actually, this year, they committed this, right at the moment. But they have two opportunities, or several opportunities, maybe even more than that, to commit, come back in January or February and show the progress, show how they're moving along. And then, hopefully, that's a better plan. Hopefully, they need the right.
I'm glad to see the state's still on.
And also, in our, you have the organizational chart, Town of Lakeview.
I just, I remembered I had given it to council last year, and I just wanted to update it with names on it, make sure everybody was aware of how our organization works. So, I just want to make sure everybody had, so.
And everybody's got their OC bulletin? The last item on there is the Vacate Street, Washington Street. And I had to drive out by there to see what, what they were talking about. That street there, it's an actual street, but if we need another access into the fairgrounds, I could actually use that.
So, I looked it up on Google Earth as well today, and Street View as well, and, you know, the county's getting many requests like this, tomorrow, do another request like this to Vacate a Street that's been plotted, that, you know, if, you know, the fairgrounds have been plotted, this would have connected to another, you know, subdivision within the fairgrounds. However, the county probably has no intention of opening up another access point across a field that floods, as we've seen this last year. This is just, at this point, just information, right?
It was a request, and so it comes to the council first, and then I would go and we'd have to do the ordinance and stuff.
So, since I'm the guy at the county that does this, and we'll be doing it tomorrow, wouldn't a hundred percent of the adjacent owners agree to it? It doesn't require a hearing, and the council can recognize it, just as the county commissioners will do so tomorrow. This request always from Melvin Dick, it looks like. I'm just curious what the other two owners have said, that being, well, I guess one owner on it. But, you know, if we've got a process that you'll work with legal counsel to follow that's different than the county's and.
So, Jeff, do you have comments?
Well, I feel differently about vacating streets than we do alleys that are usually landlocked by homeowners, and I don't know that we could assume what somebody at a later date with a fairground, we want to be, you know, there could be a master plan that included something different, you know, we just don't want to act on something recklessly.
What's his reason for having, for getting a vacay?
That's the point I didn't understand for sure, I guess, just because the area had not been used before.
He's building a shop with living quarters, because they sold their ranch, and so they're gonna be traveling, and when they're not traveling, and they're here, because they're gonna have stores in their, in their big shop, and he'll do whatever, little home stuff out of it, whatever. And then, he's got an application in with Jimmy right now to build this.
And he wants to vacate the road that goes through this property of his, or?
It butts his property.
It butts his property to the fairgrounds, that big building that's on.
I would make a point of, you know.
I've never seen.
There is a narrow strip of land that actually is between this street and the fairgrounds that runs from Fourth Street all the way past Missouri, and then all the way out to Roberta Road. The county owns, it needs to eventually go through a process to get rid of. Whether it's vacating, it's not a road, so it needs to be, it's a narrow strip of deeded land to the county, foreclosed on years ago. So, there's no actual direct access point to the fairgrounds. When we, when we discuss vacating this, the owners need to agree, or, you know, we can overrule it, obviously, if they don't, but they still have to be proven access. And obviously, there is access right on Roberta Road. I mean, currently, it's a field, it's a platted undeveloped road, which dead ends at the fairgrounds, which will always be the fairgrounds, and, you know. The county owns that narrow strip of land, and so during our process, they'll get notified, and then they will have access out there. I mean, thanks for that, and others will run the process, I mean, there's nothing really to discuss right now. This would be Fifth Street if you were to continue north. It's a portion of what would be, this is Fourth.
Yeah, the highway is Fourth.
This would be Fifth if we, if extended across. But it's, it's a, it's a field right now, it's never gonna be a road. And I could say that because the fairgrounds aren't gonna, I mean, that floods, they'd have to build that road up so far if they were trying to make another access point there. And again, that narrow strip of land that's in between kind of hinders trying to go across that to say that there's a road connecting to the fairgrounds, because currently, there really isn't.
So, this is just north of the Oregon Department of Forests?
Yes, it's a field. And you would not know that there's a platted road there.
Absolutely.
Just like all the stuff that's out there. I mean, the whole, the whole, yeah, I mean, this whole valley's not, but surrounding towns, the platted roads need to get vacated. I'll do them on tomorrow.
Is there, there's no water sewer line or anything in that tree desert?
No, not in, not in the platted street. There, you know, there is in Roberta Avenue.
So, is Mr. Dick gonna want water, or?
Well, they're, they right now qualify to have water in the sewer.
So, how do we get to it if we don't have any?
Well, it wouldn't be on the new platted street. I'm just curious if we don't vacate the street, is he still gonna have room? Is there any reason to vacate the platted street? Would, does it make his property not big enough to do the project he's projecting? Is that why he wants to do it, or?
I don't understand.
And he might be misinformed about how the vacation would work. It's supposed to go fifty percent to each owner, so he'd only get thirty feet.
Right.
Of a platted sixty-foot right away, right now. About thirty feet's a lot when you're only building a structure that needs to meet setbacks and what, it is five feet. It makes a big difference on anybody's law. That's why we see these vacations where there's not likely gonna be a street for them. I mean, I'm doing one tomorrow, right now, right across from, like, the Ready Mix. It's a plowed street that butts up right against the railroad tracks. We're not gonna continue to make crossings over the rail. So, this narrow, not even a hundred foot long by the sixty foot wide, little strip needs to be vacated, so on our own bullseye, we're gonna go for it tomorrow.
Well, yesterday, I met with the attorney and our engineer and for Jeff. The recommendation was that we do not, you know, approve vacaying a street. So, that was what they.
That's what Daryl said?
Yeah, yeah, all three, everybody.
Well, that's fine, that's, it can come, he's made a request, there's a legal process, and we take opinions and we'll weigh it out, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm under. Uneducated, apparently.
All right, Mayor, Councilwoman, I have nothing to report.
I don't know much, I went to the Mario and Christie retirement party that was a surprise last night, and it was quite lovely for the two of them, and it was very nice. And then, a number of people showed up, and the food was great.
How did we find out about it?
We have, somebody sent me an email or a text.
You're in it?
Yeah. I thought you meant that.
I do now.
I should have bought you. Somebody has bought it, the thirty-first, I think, is their last day technically. They, I don't know if they stopped serving before then. I know that Chamber has a Christmas party there on the twenty-second, so I'm assuming they'll be open then. I heard that it was a relative of somebody here in town who has a friend who is a chef. That's.
My son.
Yeah, we can get your son, I'd be a happy woman. My only concern is that Mario will even take his recipe for Mario's special sauce with him. That would be devastating.
Jenny?
Nothing to report.
Norman?
Very excited to hear about the support and the progress that Dolly Parton book group is making in our community. That's, people need to take advantage of that, we can't flood social media enough with getting parents to sign up for that. Twenty-five bucks a year for a book each month, delivered to the house, addressed to their kid.
It's gonna be awesome.
Yeah, they don't pay, I mean, folks like me that probably will sign up and donate back, but it's, it's a good program, and so it's being used. You know, I attended the meetings that I normally attend, like Chip, and thankfully, the paper reports plenty on those. We've got good people in place who make good steps there, so.
Mike?
I just wanted to say thanks to the staff that enjoyed all the enjoyment of the holiday party this COVID weekend, so, that's all I have.
No, thanks, guys.
That was nice.
No, I got a little religious, but no.
So, what else?
I say, that's the biggest baloney I've ever heard, Mike Warner.
Okay, if we have nothing else, we'll.
And thank you for helping in the kitchen.
Yeah.
And thank you for cooking, some of the best. Actually, I'm. And thank you for cooking, some of the best, actually, I've lived on it for three days, so...
Okay, nothing else, if you're in a meeting, if I can.